I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a clear justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight is Monday, August 26th. This is the regularly scheduled town council meeting. For our roll call, we have Mr. Formicella, Mr. Horarc, myself, Ms. La Palace, Mr. Reed by teleconference, and Mr. Mauer present. Due to the summer, we have a few unable to make it. We have one council member who is ill, and one council member stuck at the airport, so they're very responsible getting back to me to let me know where they're going to be here, so you can make sure that you move forward with our business. This is our only meeting in August. We will move on to the consent calendar. Are there any comments or objections to the consent? Mr. Reed, I'll give you a little bit of extra time to yell at me through that speaker if you have to. All right, hearing none and seeing none, I will pass the consent calendar. We have Communications A through T. And I've asked Madam Clerk that we incorporate those verbatim into the minutes of this meeting. Do you now have public participation with any members of the public which do participate at this time? Mr. First, you come forward, name an address for the record.
Please, first thirty-five applications, thank you. On your agenda tonight for your own developing evaluation, follow the and hopefully with part of that discussion, maybe some of the best of that and things that you have to say.
Thank you very much. We will do that. Anybody else? Yeah, you come forward. Name an address for the record, just so you can have our minutes accurate. Welcome.
Yes, I have something strange about doors and doors that are they have like fences that have to completely break and they turn more like and I don't know what to do about it. I'm afraid of walking in and there's had problems where there's been teams about one of them was who attacked their rent company. The master was outside, he usually isn't, so it was a little bit retarded, and he, I don't know, he was trying to stall, and I was screaming to him, because other doors have a master door, so and that one was also going to hurt all of them. And it was great. And then, I was going to say maybe we got a problem that three doors there, two of them were on the wall, and there's a particular house where the doors were always out there, typically coming in, and the door at every time, I'm looking at my friend and my daughter, we're ready, but the door, but we're starting, you know, like, down to the end, so very high, I have to walk up in the middle of the street, and I don't want to, because I'm running walking in the wrong direction, busy traffic, and this past time, what happened when I crossed over, the door came out, and it started with a driver of a car coming the opposite direction where I was walking, and he swerved, and almost hit me with the door swerved. Then, you take that into that. This house usually is not a problem, there are two little doors that they're trying to keep threatening. It really wasn't the fault of the owner, or the little boy, or something with the door, and the door came out, and it was brown and chafed, and the door was short, this was to follow it, almost like a quad, causing it to come through. So, my concern, I'm plain, I'm not a doorkeeper, I don't know how to threaten my own doors, but the doors are friends, and I don't think it should be left outside without a master, especially with the unattended doors. And there are up there a number of other doors, but actually, the four of them, because that's if the door that I'm doing, parking in the alley, do not like them. First, I went to forty-three, and then he said, I don't know, I don't know, I don't forget it. And then I was so upset, I started shaking when I got home, and he was kind of like but this is an ongoing problem, and here, but right now, it's just escalated to such a level that I can't, I try looking around, and I go, the doors are open. So, I don't know what can be done about it. I'm going to the ordinance, or the police department, or the law, and it I just don't know what should be happening next, but I love to meet them, and threaten them as soon as they
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody else, I will close public participation. If you could, that would be good. We have two appointments this evening, both Republicans. The first one is David James Cuban to EDC, Mr. Palace.
Okay, David James Cuban, a 140 Republican, Shelton Road, to the Economic Development Mission, with a term ending 1/31/2023.
Motion by Ms. La Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second for discussion, Ms. La Palace.
David is a five-year resident of Monroe with twenty years of restaurant experience. David owns and operates Planet Pizza. David has already donated his time to restaurants in Monroe, advising them on how to best utilize social media to build their business. We believe that David's extensive experience will make him a true asset to the EDC. This appointment fills the vacancy created by David Deismar.
Thank you, Ms. La Palace. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none and hearing none, I will call for a vote by a show of hands, and Mr. Reed, by your voice, please. Mr. Mauer, last second. All those in favor? Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Thank you. And nobody against, that motion carries on to six to zero. And the second appointment is Robert Westland to planning and zoning as an alternate, Mr. Palace.
Rob, I make a motion to appoint Robert Westland, a 30 rodeo drive, to the position of planning and zoning alternate, filling the vacancy left by Jonathan Formicella for a term ending 11/25/2019.
Motion by Ms. La Palace, is there a second? Back to second on Mr. Formicella, discussion, Ms. La Palace.
Robert Westland is a 49-year resident of Monroe. Robert has served the town over the past years on EDC and is ready to continue to serve the town on planning and zoning. He believes his experience with EDC has given him a unique point of view that will help him to upload the town's regulations while promoting appropriate economical growth.
Thank you, Ms. La Palace. Any further discussion?
Just one more.
Mr. Mauer, sir.
I know that they're serving on EDC. Is this creating a new vacancy on EDC with this appointment?
I believe so.
And?
So, Mr. Westland's already resigned from EDC, so the prior planning and dis却 does that vacancy?
Even though it says David Deismar was the
Oh, I'm sorry, did I?
It's not for this one.
Oh, yeah, you're right, there is, so there's a
Yes.
Yes, there is another one.
I think the answer is yes.
But the follow-up question is, has he already resigned?
Yes, yes, yes.
So then, that's it.
Yes, I forgot about Mr. Deismar, yes, you're right. So there is one vacancy.
And condition precedent was that Mr. Westland, the interview by LNA, was this evening, and passed a consideration by the council unanimously, that was two to zero. I will state that Mr. Westland has been a dedicated servant to the town since he's come on, and I think this is a fabulous opportunity for him to step into this role, and certainly the town will benefit from that. So I'm excited about that, and looking forward to his willingness to continue to serve. But I will
Is he here?
He is, we have to vote first. All right. I'll call for a I know we're very excited about this, but
I always look a good
Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Reed?
Aye.
And against, motion carries, six to zero. As Ms. La Palace pointed out, Mr. Westland was here, so if you want to come forward, you can be sworn in by the first electman. I guess you just want all of us to say aye to it, I always
Do you solemnly swear, or solemnly sincerely affirm this agreement, and faithfully discharge the warning log, the evidence, and the member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and all of that, and the rest of the abilities to help you back to contact EDC?
All right, we're going to move on to, there are no more appointments, we'll move on to our action items. The first action item is the Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety. Mr. Rooney. Well, Mr. Rooney, the chair, he's not present, he did not give me a little report, which I'll be able to
We have no
Okay, thank you very much. Did you want to run the meeting this evening?
No. But in November? I've done my
Moving on to Action Item B is Planning and Zoning Public Works and Parking Recreation. That is Ms. La Palace.
No, 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 there was no meeting this August.
Time to shine, and that's what you gave them, huh?
I can make up stuff.
All right, moving on to LNA. Mr. Reed, do you want to give the report to the teleconference?
Yeah, just really quick, Mr. Chairman, we did meet before council tonight. We saw one result, which was in one of the vacancies gets sworn in, and then the rest of what we spoke about is on the agenda tonight. We will hit it one by one.
Thank you very much. SPC, Mr. Formicella was elected the chairman of SPC, so I am happy to see that commission moving forward with him at the leadership position, so I'll ask Mr. Formicella to act there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met on three items on August 7th at seven o'clock here in Town Hall. The first of which concerned Monroe volunteer fire department headquarters space needs assessment. Plan going forwards to further evaluate the designs submitted and costs associated with each design. And the first electman noted that there are capital funds earmarked for the key building phase. SPC will receive an update on progress. Jakunski Hughes, as it relates to potential costs and phases of the project. Next, we had a, we discussed a status update on municipal space needs assessment. Jakunski Hughes is very close to providing the committee with a draft defining, based upon the meeting of town staff. The draft will include an opinion of needs of town, and will be presented to SPC and the town. And finally, status update on the strategic planning study of fiber services. We, when we met, we decided that for our next meeting on September 12th at six o'clock, the members, as well as fire chiefs, will provide an analysis and of the short-term and mid-term recommendations, and provide an opinion as to feasibility of implementing the recommendations.
Thank you very much. And our next meeting, as you said, is nine as well.
Yes.
Moving on to EMS Building Committee, Mr. Rooney is the chair of that. He did give me a report on EMS. They are very close to finalizing the construction contract between Burlington Construction and the town of Monroe. I did advise him that the next step in that process, the vetting process of that agreement, would be to refer to LNA, which we were prepared, we are prepared to do as soon as they are ready. I don't have to be at an open meeting, so I can certainly get that report over to LNA as quickly as they are ready, and Mr. Reed, I did discuss with him, he's ready to have a standalone designated meeting for the, strictly for the purpose of reviewing that contract, which I would imagine would require the presence of a member of the EMS committee, and Mr. Hayden, Attorney Hayden, since he's been at the full concentration in that agreement, so we're ready to go when that committee deploys. And then ask him about these, as our first electman said.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I passed along the written update, just a few quick things. One, we did receive our, once again, it has now become an annual equity distribution from Perma, an amount of $62,255. As you know, this is an ongoing relationship with Perma, and we're retaining costs by leveraging our relationship and having multiple towns working together. So we're certainly very pleased that, once again, Perma's had a very strong year last year, and we're going to have another equity distribution. Wanted to make sure the council's aware of further changes in the registrar voter's office. Democrat Registrar Sukhanah has tended her resignation effective September 1st, and as the current deputy is not up to the office pursuant to state statute, the EDC has appointed a successor in the name of Trinch Briggs of 11/30. So she will be the registrar effective Monday. And last but certainly not least, as you, I'm sure all know from prior reports, Jim Sandor retired after decades of service to the town. I'm pleased that, to report that I have promoted Gunnar Gaylord, who's been the assistant building official for, he will become the chief building official effective September 1st. He's been with us since 2001, been in the industry for decades, and he works very diligently and provides good customer service and is well-respected. I'm sure he'll do a great job there. And that was all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Mr. Mauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Selectman. Mr. Selectman just wanted to check in. I know there's been a lot of reports recently on the accidents on 110 and Wheeler Road. I did see that we, there has been contact with the state as to coming out reevaluating. I wanted to see if there was any update on that now, or if not, just ask that once there is.
Sure, I'd be happy to give you an update as of now. So, I did give an update recently with this council, after there've been a couple of incidents there, and that status is largely unchanged in terms of all of the incidents that occurred at that intersection since the installation of the flashing LED stop sign have all been cases where the driver has come to a stop and then pursued into traffic. Certainly still concerning, but the issue at hand is that what was the root cause initially, which was the optical illusion when going north on Wheeler, it appears that there is no cross street at a certain point. That appears to have been hopefully resolved with that flashing sign and all the other changes that were down at Intersections. So, there seems to be something else occurring at that intersection that is causing this to occur. We have not, and we've, you know, obviously, our police department goes out and investigates every time, so they do know the direction of travel, relative speeds, they know what's occurring. It's, at this point, it's rival behavior, and there's no obvious reason as to why it's occurring. The, they have routinely, and they have continued to send information to the state DOT. We had kind of, we emphasized our concerns with them recently to say that we really need them to take a really hard look at this to see if there's something that just wasn't noticed before. So that's the status of that. I do have one really recent development in that there were a couple of incidents recently where involved traffic southbound on Wheeler, which has not happened before. So, we did look at the sightlines coming southbound from Wheeler, and did find some concerns in that regard. So, what I can report is, with the permission and consent of the property owner, we will be taking some freeze down on the former there on that side. So that, that actually should be happening, you know, within
Have you ever looked into speed bumps? Because people, my constituents will start saying, have they heard of speed bumps over there?
So, I'll say this, first of all, I want to be sensitive and respectful and empathetic to everyone in town who has concerns over speed and issues all over town. However, if we were to install a speed bump for everyone who wants one in town, you'd be very frustrated, because you wouldn't get anywhere in town. Everyone thinks, and I understand it, I think it's a logical solution. What people don't understand is that speed bumps, and again, I'm not the expert in this, there's traffic engineers who do this as a science, as a living, as well as our traffic authority, our police department, the police commission. Speed bumps have negative unintended consequences as well. They slow traffic down, they slow response time of emergency vehicles, they create additional noise, they create more acceleration braking, people complain about damage to their vehicles even though they're going slow. So, you know, they're not, the current science is that they're not a good solution. We find that people also, when dealing with speed bumps, will tend to go faster in between the bumps, because they're trying to make up lost time, so it creates The current science is that it's not the most effective tool to use, not to mention the disruption of snowplows and damage and all that stuff. So, again, the police department will continue to look at it, they're the traffic authority, they'd have to rule on that, but it's not the best tool in the toolbox from what I've heard.
Okay, thank you.
And just as a follow-up, is my understanding is correct, with 110 being a state road, anything would have to be approved or go through that process?
That's correct.
As well?
Yes. I notice the, since I go on that road daily, because our office has moved recently, it seems like that stretch from the firehouse going towards Whitney Park, if you just take a second to notice it, the tree canopy along that stretch seems to be much more dense than, say, other sections. Once you get past that, it opens up. The remaining distance down to Shelton is pretty wide open. But it does seem, I mean, the trees are actually cantering over in that particular section, which seems to coincide with some of the problem areas down the road and the intersection in question, you know?
Yeah, there was extensive clearing on the other side, and to put Mr. Malak on the spot, I'm sure he's very But Kim and Keith White replies that two have dealt with most of this, and there was a lot of clearing that was done on the other end of the intersection when we tried to deal with the issue of that optical illusion. So I know that they have addressed that.
By the way, I don't know, I don't know if there's a correlation or not, it's just a particular sense of travel, I presume.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Selectman. Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening. We have a number of items of new business, starting with the EDC presentation that was basically responsible for first electman to a request by, I think, Mr. Engdular or Mr. Smart on a number of occasions, and unfortunately, they're not present this evening, but we hopefully can provide them that they not exist, and we have our take here. So, without further ado, Mr. Giann, thank you.
Thank you. Ray Giann, and So, thank you for entertaining us tonight, for very exciting, just demonstrate some of the good things that are going on, and what we're working towards. So I'd like to present this at my name. I'd like to, first of all, congratulate the committee that we have assembled up until 20 minutes ago. Rob Westland was our vice chair, very integrated in our community, and served with the great leadership skills that he has. So I want to thank Rob publicly for all the good work that he's accomplished with us. Bill Florin, Nicole Louplos here tonight, who's our secretary, and is also very engaged in our civic duties that go on. Herman Oleviaria, as well as Ashish Perma. These are the committee members that we currently are holding at our table, and moving forward, a lot of them, I'd like to show you some of them. So, again, I thank them publicly for all the good work they dedicate themselves religiously to what we're trying to accomplish, our mission. You'll see that we research many issues, and we put some economic conditions together, and watch some of the trends that are happening as to where the town will be going, and where we're going to have some needs and opportunities, so that we can better respond to our constituents. We make recommendations to some of the officials in our town regarding, you know, some of the things that we need to improve upon, and creating a better economic condition for future development and existing developments that's going on. We're very proud of being able to recommend some of those great things. We try to coordinate some of the activities and cooperate with some of the unofficial bodies that organize, that organize to promote such economic development. We've done that in many ways. We advertise and try to prepare and print distribution of our books, maps, charts, pamphlets, which, you know, certainly promote the growth of our Monroe and all of the resources we have to offer. So we've come up with some actual materials. We have a great package we put together now that we hand out to prospects, that we use at some of our events that we create. Our significant efforts are to credit solicit and share information for a great customer experience from businesses, brokers, and developers in our town that come here to investigate some of the opportunities that are available. We've started, we have a strong, a solid starting point for tracking the market opportunities. We've put together some materials very carefully that demonstrates the zones, so that when we do get an inquiry, we're able to respond quickly, educatedly, about where those locations are, whether what the zones are in, the type of usage is. We have the, you know, spreadsheet that will show some of the owners that we can easily contact to create some great dialogue to get some of our holdings of facilities to be utilized properly. We're making recommendations, we try to, you know, work clearly with our first electman, Mr. Kellogg, and the Planning and Zoning Department, as when we recommended that we were trying to create a problem with that 50-seat rule for restaurants, by not allowing some of them to serve off the wall. You know, was something that restaurateurs were telling us was a limitation that they were trying to overcome. That brings revenues to them and so forth, and helps with the business model of a restaurant. So we were able to work with the PNZ, and subsequently, as you know, they repealed that rule, which is fantastic for someone that are smaller restaurants to deal with. We encouraged and supported some of the development of mixed-use, which is being worked on as we speak for zoning regulations. So we're excited to know that that may be coming down the pipe with the language, and that's going to create a lot of dialogue, we already have it, some developers coming to town to create some of these kind of great venues. That's a great outreach to what's needed by our demographic that are showing up. We started discussions on active participation in the updated of our DOCD, which we're excited to know is happening, and that we are pulling our thoughts together and doing our own research, so we can make great recommendations as that could be for us. In large coordination and cooperation, you know, we're involved with the town planner, Shelton Company, as well as the first electman, trying to talk about potential development opportunities. You know, we bring developers to the conference room table to talk about concepts, and try to figure out what is the best solutions for them, for the town, for our residents alike that appreciate these kinds of development and roads that are happening, some of the business properties and structures that play into that. We also are very proud that one of, you know, I myself sit down there at on the first electman business advisory council meeting, and giving great, you know, trying to give good feedback and represent the existing businesses that are in town, and giving feedback on the responses I'm receiving from prospects trying to come to our So we definitely share those opinions there at that table, and that commission, that committee then goes forward and works closely, collaboratively with the community. We have great, great feedback there for that. And we sit on the, as I said, we make recommendations, and we sit on that committee. So that's some of the things that we do. We relax, well, some of the recommendations we did make previously was on, our first mission was on the parking regulations, to try to relax some of those rules that are in place. And we've been successful there, and thanks to the PNZ and the response we get from them. So that's done. We talked about the staff level approvals, with Rick Schultz's advisement, to try to change on how some of those things happen, to try to expedite processes that are very simply approved by the PNZ commission. And that's been done. We simplified the change of use process. So for tenants that have light usage, we expedite that process to get them in there as quickly and comfortably as possible, giving them a great customer experience, and not a lot of red tape, not a lot of that out. So we're very pleased with that. Currently, we're looking right now to the line of BP standards, the town code, as well as subdivision regulation regarding roadway construction and driveways. Through our investigation work, we uncovered the fact that there's different language in each one of these texts. And so what we're trying to do is culminate those into one consistent privileges as to what one does with the, you know, driveways, roadways, and so forth, so that, so that it's consistent throughout some of the languages that developers, homeowners, businessmen use to create some of their results. We partnership very carefully with the Monroe Chamber of Commerce. This has been a huge success for us. Our relationship is strong, and the fact that we do joint ribbon cuttings together and so forth. There's, you know, the focus is on synergy versus any competition that once used to exist. So it is a much better working environment, with a lot better results all the way around. It's almost like inhaling and exhaling. Both groups work together, knowing that there's only one mission, and that's to create a great experience for our experience for our town spokes as well as the business owners to make them be more successful. So we worked with the chamber on one of our projects together, which is the Monroe Welcome Signs at our six gateways that come into our town. We're very proud that we're going to see brand-new signs, that the chamber led the charge on that. But, you know, history showed that the old East Economic Development Commission in our town always worked together with that project and they're going to see brand-new sparkly signs. They're ready to go now and the town is going to try to make sure that we're proud when we see these, we're going to see some new sponsorships and so forth to help that. They're going to be actually manicured now and they go forward, which there was never a resource for that, but again, with the Economic Development Commission, we found a great local landscaper who's going to dedicate his services to keep them in on a week-by-week, month-by-month basis for the entire year. So they won't become, you know, the opposite of what we're trying to do is create a great welcome sign to the gate. So we're pleased that our Economic Development Commission came up with that resource and he couldn't be more proud to help us. So this is all going to be put together within the next few weeks and we're going to start to see this happen. Again, I mentioned earlier the joint ribbon cuttings and co-marketing to some of the community events. So when a ribbon cutting gets accomplished, the chamber as well as economic development goes to action and we start to broadcast through e-glass and so forth, the fact that the restaurants have, the restaurants and all any other businesses is new and then please come out and support them. And then we do public, you know, public PR work for that and send out notices and so forth to the local communications, whether it's online or physically. We've been very successful making sure that anybody coming to town or opening up business has a great opportunity to be successful. And we certainly try to show that and we certainly helped it up as part of our introductions and letting mine come in as well. One of the other companies we had last year was very successful, 18, and we're just underway now, is promoting the phenomenal restaurants that we have in our town. We have many of them, as you know, and we did a Monroe restaurant last year. It was more inclusive. We operated to every establishment, no matter how small or large, from the local delis, you know, we even went to the main chains to get involved, as well as as the fine restaurants that are so diverse. And what we found, we had a 50% increase, you know, in our participation over the prior year, which we're very proud of. And planning, I just said, starting actually first and that when we began to, we've already been talking about it, but we're really going to put rubber to the road and get to 19th of January, which is going to be in October. And so we're going to see great things happening this year. And I know we've already spoken to a lot of those past restaurants and they're all already into this year and we're going to give them more organized and give them a better event. So be on the lookout for them. Don't eat some ham with everybody, right? The Fairfield County Commercial Brokers Network, we had a phenomenal event at our local Whitney Farms here in May, May 31st. We had over 110 deals. It was a phenomenal response from that area of concern and they came and witnessed the first selectmen, who was keynote speaker, he did a phenomenal job presenting all of the attributes that our town has and where we are going and how we're getting there and really spoke articulately well about how much progress we made today. So we're very proud of that day. We had a beautiful day out on the golf course there to look over the fields and then we took a bus tour of our properties and we gave out our spreadsheets to show them all of the available stations that are available. And we actually had some follow-ups after that meeting that has resulted in some great solutions for those clients. Welcome packages, as I mentioned, has in it, you know, the Monroe Sure that we created, commercial listings was in there of all of the parcels that are trying to be developed and/or built on existing spaces. We even created a flash drive that now we can share for anybody who's interested of our wonderful video that we're so proud of and materials that help promote that. So it's a great package and well-organized presentation. Now, I'm going to show you some of the video.
This is Monroe, Connecticut. And this is Monroe. So is this. Now, if you were to simply drive through Monroe, you might think it's just another charming New England town. But if you were to stop and spend a day or two here, you'd find it's a town that has all of the fuel needed to become an economic landmark. Take a day to visit Monroe and this is what you'll discover. A town of financially affluent and educated residents eager to engage in new opportunities. A location nestled between two major interstate highways and only a short distance from two shipping ports, relaxing coastal beaches and the amenities of large cities. And one of the few towns in Fairfield County that offers substantial open commercial and industrial space set aside for major development. A day spent here will show you a town willing to look to its past to find its future. Monroe, named for our fifth president, a man of vision and action. Founded by farmers with the grit and perseverance to till rocky soil, a tradition that continues in some areas to this day. Home to a village that continues to commemorate our heritage. Spend a day in Monroe and discover what our residents already know and love. A freshly brewed pour from our own brewery who call it Parks that attract families from throughout the state. A renowned summer concert series and our seven distinct neighborhoods, each with its own charm in architecture, whose residents are active in community affairs. This is a town that attracts families. One of many reasons is because we take the education of our youngest very seriously. As a result, the education they receive comes from award-winning schools that rank among the highest in the state. Monroe knows its future will continue to demand a well-educated workforce. You'll find that educated workforce is already in the town's well-established industrial and commercial businesses. Monroe is headquarters to national iconic brands. Some have been here for decades, others relatively new, and more are in the process of moving in. And catering to the many needs of its residents is Monroe's strong retail base. From shopping to dining to entertainment, you'll find what you want right here in town. And the catalyst the town recently added to its economic potential is this. We recently took measured yet active steps to make it much easier for a new business to move its operations to Monroe. We think you'll like what we did, so spend a day with us. Talk to our residents and town leaders. Let us show you the many ways we're building the future of Monroe.
I'm sure you've seen this before, but we wanted to showcase that as a tremendous host to our energies that we try to share with others, prospects who are coming to town and find out what are Monroe all about and what it's so well done. Here are some, a sampling of some of our business openings that we've done, you know, we do so many of them, but here's a snapshot of a few of them. This is of Republic Kitchen. We got Next Credit Union come to town, which is a great establishment on 25, which is a phenomenal company that's running very well there right now. We have Warren Antiques come, this is another one we just did over the last summer. The NBC Universal Warehouse, as you know, is at 125. Again, Barto Fast is another growing multifaceted organization in many towns. They decided to pick Monroe as one of their destination points and they're advertising it right now very aggressively, heard it on radio, TV, so we're happy to have them in town. Monroe Spirit Shop, again, here's another business owner who, for health reason, had to sell his shop, Frank, or a gentleman, and this gentleman came from New York, actually, and bought this establishment and reopened it and is doing well. We have another ribbon cutting scheduled for them next month. So we're happy that they were able to do this. People are seeking out Monroe and one called Al Galo Dorado, another phenomenal Mexican restaurant here, not really authentic Mexican. This is the place to get, they make everything fresh by hand, it's amazing. Wind River Environmental, another big win for our town of Monroe. They were housed in Newtown, as you may know, and came to town as a destination through the efforts of our EDC to come to Monroe. Make-A-Home, what a great business model this is, as you may know. They donate, they refurbish furniture, they're on 25, they refurbish their furniture by hand themselves with their skill sets and then they give portions of each donation to Make-A-Homes as a, you know, veterans, those in need for veterans. They actually give them free furniture and take some of the proceeds and hand over as donations to that organization, very committed. So what a wonderful business model that they are part of. Our New Horizon, we just did this over the summer in July here, they had a great ribbon cutting, we had a lot of fun for the entire weekend. They did a three-day event up on 25 here and you can see the beautiful facility that was built recently. They're the first tenant to move in there and there are more coming by the owner's own recognition of the facility. And there we did our ribbon cutting with collaboration again with the chamber and there's our T, as you see in the front row there, that we use for economic development as our key to the city. So that's what you see there. And again here, a great new institution, a realty, a realty one on 111 here. They had a great, probably about 110 people attended this ribbon cutting, which was done, I think, near that maybe June, I think that was. So John here is in the front, next to Ken, doing the ribbon cutting and they're all for a phenomenal start. NEHDS Logistics, this is the facility up on Pepper Street, as you knew it was really good stuff. It used to be there, the tenant there fired. These folks purchased this building, one of the largest commercial units here in Monroe. They employ 155 employees and they've got a phenomenal warehouse here that you can see. There's a picture of some of the, what we witnessed at the ribbon cutting down below and all that merchandise goes out each day. That's not something that's going to take a week to distribute. All that material goes out within the same 10-hour workday, which provides 155 employees, of which is about a dozen that stay on the facility, the rest take off in trucks to deliver those goods. And they start coming in around 3:30 in the morning, we fill it back up again and by 5:30 the trucks are already heading out of our town to various destinations. So again, Clock Tower is another success story that I want to make sure you're aware of. It used to be a challenge with regards to the empty facilities that they had there and that was two years ago with high vacancy. And now you can see some of the accomplishments there that's been successful, primarily designed and designed to begin there. They were down the road in a smaller facility. She has a great business model, very hardworking, diligent, local owner and she's had to grow up to some new additional space. So they're growing, that's why they had to go. Turning the pages, again, this was Storytime, Linda Storytime, which was an institution in our town for books. And everyone thought when she was retiring and moved to South Carolina, that no one's ever going to take over a bookstore in the year 2019. Well, this nice person did and has a lot of experience as she used to be a, you know, librarian, so in that facility now because of more space that's required. Zen Hair Lounge opened up there now. Bollywood Tea and Studio is there now. This particular MG, MG Nails is coming there too. And Lakeside Nutrition is not established yet, but I know that they have an intent to either fit up their space and they're going to be joining us there in that place. As well as Child World Academy has been there for a few years now and again, we're very proud of this. We're doing another ribbon cutting here for natural pet outlet, great trade owner, we've met them and we're so proud that they've taken over the space and they're going to come in this job in here. They took their time and they're ready to do a ribbon cutting soon. So it's completely, like I said, I think right now, I think there's only one unit that might be still available in there. So we're very proud of that. As you know, our friends at Sipman have gone into the propane business now and so they're growing still, which are so big, that they've got a great plan in place. And they have some new projects on the way. Here is another approval of a gate here, as you know, here on Monroe Turnpike. That's in the middle of being constructed right now. If you drive by, you'll see there's a lot of action going on right there, clearing the trees and getting parking sites available and so forth. As you know, the liquor store was approved directly across the street from that establishment where the old Goodwill used to exist. Again, this is where the Verizon store had opened up, ribbon cutting, this beautiful facility with this stone facade. There are more tenants approved and ready to go in there according to what the owners have told us when we did the ribbon cutting that day. So we're looking forward to see those tenants start to fill up those spaces. We have 485 Pepper Street, which is Grasso Companies, is already there working currently. We have the former Stevenson Lumber. There's a new business zone was proposed for that, trying to get that ready for being a viable entity for our town and a productive tax payer. So we're working on trying to get that and we reengineered so it could be more productive. We also have the approval, as you may know, for a Noble gas station. Noble gas station is on the same tone, I guess, as the Cumberland Farms, I guess, where, you know, have a convenience store combination. There are a number of these already in place, so they are a great track record and they're ready to come and start filling there. So that's only one of multiple that can be there. There's also going to be a retail outlet, a medical facility, an office facility and actually a more of a national restaurant that's already sort of committed to take on that particular address that we're going to be very proud to see that come. It's not quite yet for announcement, but it's pretty much there. Main Street, the Trumbull Line, which again, I made a meeting with the Economic Development of Trumbull, Rena, Baccalaur. I said, "Look, you know, we need to have a great storyline that the two towns are working together on a great project and this is the project we want to talk about." So I took the developer there to Rena and in Trumbull, we sat down there for a few hours with his engineer and we showed them what we proposed and this is what we see here, it's a beautiful looking facility, which is a mixed-use, which is what we're working towards, as you know, as I mentioned earlier. And Rena was so excited to talk about working together on this, that we're going to really be raising our flags high and proud when we do get this accomplished. It's going to be a while yet, but, you know, so we're working together with Trumbull closely and it's been a wonderful working relationship and everybody's in such high spirits over the fact that this could get accomplished. What we see here is that one third of this particular facility is in Trumbull, I mean, two, the other one on 23rd is in, down, maybe it's, it kind of goes right down the middle. Yeah, maybe right down the middle, maybe it's 50/50, there above, don't quote me, but it's a Trumbull Monroe circuit. So what we have there is a sample, example of mixed-use, what that might look like with some retail space as well as apartments upstairs, again, more like one-bedroom apartments, trying to address some of the anomalies and some of the other developments that we are working with right now that have created demand for apartment usage without putting a big burden on our system necessarily, which we're developing. So look forward to that coming down the pipeline. Main Street and Victoria Drive, you've heard of that before, Bob Dunbar is working on this major project, which is a huge undertaking that we've already had presentations on, so we're looking forward to that as well. Again, more of a, you know, shops at Victoria Place, more of a destination we're trying to create, where people can actually spend a day there, parking, I mean, some park-like settings, tables where they, you know, umbrella for the restaurants and so forth, so they can really take their time and enjoy a wonderful day there. So that's what we have going on in Monroe, there's a awful lot happening, but as you know, it takes a long time to get some new developers going and we're concentrating on trying to pull up existing parcels that are going to appreciate all these attributes that we've shown them. So I thank you for giving us this opportunity. I thank our commission again, how hard they work, how diligent they are and that we appreciate your support in helping us to promote our movement.
Thank you, Mr. Gion, fabulous presentation. It's on the general, are there any questions or comments, Mr. Mott?
First off, thank you and thank you to the entire committee for your hard work and everything you've been doing. I know that- I know that many people in town have been enjoying the different events, Restaurant Week, things along those lines, as well as the consistent updates on ribbon cuttings, it's nice to see that out and about in a public nature. I did have one question in that you were talking about the different materials you guys have put together, the pamphlets, maps, books, are those available for somebody to be, if they come to Town Hall, get?
Yes.
And are they also available online?
They are available at Town Hall, we have them, I have them in my office as well, so that we have a prospect for existing, you know, business in town that wanted to grab an opportunity to look that over, all the material is in a great binder with the Monroe logo on it, the president's seal. So yes, but it's not online as far as...
Some of it is though, and some of the information's kind of dynamic because there's listings and things like that.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion.
But the basic information is... And to go along with that, I think adding more online presence, especially present aid would be great.
You're right.
From the broker event that we did, has there been much response from the brokers that came from...
Yeah, that was really a, you know, I called it a renaissance that we're trying to present to the professionals because again, we've had a little bit of a reputation that it's a tough town and it's challenging sometimes, but now that we've steered everything in the direction that we are all embracing, that was certainly the message that got distributed that day. The developers came away saying, oh my God, there really is a whole, we have to have a different attitude. We've been sort of fighting that challenge is that some of the developers, the brokers always said, we're not going to bring our clients there because it's challenging. You know, Mr. Schultz being present and so forth and Ken's leadership here and the economic development on the same page, trying to say we have to make this a friendly user atmosphere, almost like a customer experience. When they come in, we try never say the word no. I run a family, we're saying, but you never say no. Our first answer was yes, if you, if you deliver this, if you can give us that, it's not no, you can't do this because we said so. Yes, we can do this. If you get the zone change, if you get the right language, if you get all your ducks in a row, if the septic system allows it, if there's parking there, the answer is yes. Whatever you want to bring, if you're ready to, the answer is yes. Until you prove what, that you can't deliver what is required for that particular facility, whether it's a V1, V2, industrial, it doesn't matter. We always try to say yes versus our attitude and I think that sends a message in itself.
I had expressed interest in going in.
Yeah.
And fortunately, there was no room, which is a great sign.
It was sold out.
So that's wonderful that we're getting response from it too.
Oh, no, no, and like I said, within the same week I received all kinds of letters from these brokers who came and said we were just so overwhelmed with what we see the progress to be. And we did get some leads from that and we had some activity because of that. And so we want to keep that momentum going now and we will do that with our commission. I mean, even though Mr. Westlin will be leaving us, I'm sure we have capable individuals coming to pick those seeds that will help us in that same direction.
No, the one last thing I would ask Mr. Selectman is if this presentation could be put up as part of the minutes and as the actual presentation for the public.
Yeah, well certainly if you add the topics and we can do it.
Thank you very much.
And to Mr. Mauer's point, I can't imagine anyone who could see that presentation, just as we say, and not feel pumped, buzzed and just generally, with regards to what's happening in Monroe and certainly quell or change the narrative or the perception that, you know, we're, you know, that economics are such that it's impossible not to find because that presentation certainly says otherwise. As Mr. Mauer pointed out, I hope you can roll that out to as many people as you can possibly...
And always, we say in the same context of being respectful of our residents and the kind of lifestyle that we want to support and sustain, of course, we say that in the same time. So we're all about business and all we have a great presidential establishment that we're proud of.
Well, without a good tax base, you know, it's hard to keep that cloud alive too, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to move on to the additional business. I'm going to skip around a little bit just to try to get some of our department heads out of here. We're going to start with the item C, which is the Resolution Regarding the Connecticut Partnership Plan 2.0 rates for fiscal year 20, I suppose.
Yes, I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution Regarding the Connecticut Partnership Plan 2.0 Rates for Fiscal Year 20 and Move for Its Adoption, resolved. That Kenneth M. Keller, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the medical slash pharmacy rates effective 7/1/19 exhibited in the participation agreement and any associated documents by and between state or Connecticut Office of the Controller regarding the Connecticut Partnership 2.0 Plan Insurance Premium rates.
Motion by Mr. Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Just so the council's aware, this is an item that I intended to have on the consent calendar. It's very pro forma and I don't think it really requires a comprehensive discussion. It's a simple one-page rate sheet that you can see as it requires a signature certificate concerning the consent calendar. I don't know if there's any discussion that needs to be had, but Mr. Selectman, I have self-explanation. All right, any further discussion? I'd see none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Thank you very much, motion passes six to zero. We're going to move on to E, which is the Resolution Regarding the Increase to Haller Fees, Mr. Palace?
Yes, I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution Regarding Increase to Haller Fees and Move for Its Adoption, resolved. That pursuant to 452-6B of the Town Code, a disposal charge of $110 per ton of solid waste shall be established effective October 1st, 2019.
Motion by Mr. Palace, is there a second? Second by Mr. Formicella. I will allow us, Lieutenant, to introduce this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you've got my memo in front of you, which kind of explains in more detail, I'm happy to grant your report if you wish, on how this process works. Essentially, the town charges haulers, private haulers, a cost per ton for disposal. That is essentially a pass-through of the costs that are passed along in our collaboration with the town of Trumbull and Easton for the cost of running the transfer station in Trumbull and their cost of transporting the materials that are further processed there to Wheel Obrator in Butchport and the cost that Wheel Obrator passes along for disposal at their facility where the trash is going to energy. So there's a lot of moving parts in terms of the costs that are outlined there, but essentially with the help of our client's director and the reports have kind of gone through this, analyzed those costs and determined that our existing haul fee would need to be raised from a hundred and two dollars per ton to a hundred and ten per ton and we're going to cover the pass-through costs. Again, these are, these are really just, you know, they're not, they're certainly not making a profit here, they're simply passing along the costs of operation to the hauler. And there was a question in public participation in regards to what that may be for residents. Certainly, there would be no direct impact in terms of the town does not, I mean, say relative to the fees that private haulers charge residents for disposal. However, you know, it certainly could be possible that a private haul may choose to pass along these costs to their customers. That's one reason why we recommended that this be done effective October 1st, give some time for communication or analysis for when to be done, but we certainly emphasize that, you know, anything, you know, we're going to script the cost of doing business that if you were not to do this, then it would necessitate us addressing it through other budgetary lines, which that probably exists. And again, should I ask you, you know, Mr. Podolski, if you have any questions in regards to...
Any further questions, Mr. Reed?
Do we know what the approximate economic impact of these changes total? That the, I understand that we're passing it on to that seven dollars per ton, but what that actual total is that we are making up by passing it on? Between $25,000 and $30,000?
Roughly speaking, the amount of tons that we're talking about here, is there a figure on that? How many tons of that use are we actually handling in the course of the year, sir?
Should we look up to 300,000 or... Would you mind if I...
Anything else? Mr. Reed?
Should come off mute, aye.
No, I wasn't for a thought, I just wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to ask any questions.
Oh, no questions.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I would call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, motion carries six to zero, thank you very much. I think we can go back up to the top now, we have the Resolution Regarding Behavioral Health Services LLC Employee Assistance Program Agreement, Mr. Palace?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution Regarding Behavioral Health Consultants LLC Employee Assistance Program Agreement for Town of Monroe Employees and Move for Its Adoption, resolved. That Kenneth M. Keller, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the employee assist aid documents by and between Behavioral Health Consultants LLC for the Employee Assistance Program.
Motion by Mr. Palace, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. For discussion, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this agreement is probably very familiar to you, we did it last year around the same time, we knew it. This time we have essentially the same agreement, except it is a three-year term at the same cost that we currently have. So it's very favorable in terms of the financial arrangement and it has been, we've got Town Attorney, and it's the same, except the term is the same agreement as we saw last year.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. It was also heavily valued in Indiana, so approved by Illinois Council. Any further discussion? See, I'll call for a vote, I wasn't voted.
Aye.
Again, motion carries six to zero. Moving on to item D, the Resolution Regarding Mango Languages Agreement with the, you have the other library, Mr. Palace?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution Regarding Creative Services LLC Doing Business as Mango Languages Agreement and Move for Its Adoption, resolved. That Kenneth M. Keller, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe to Mango Languages Library Edition Terms of Service Agreement and any associated documents by and between Creative Services LLC Doing Business as Mango for Software Translation Services at the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library.
Thank you, Mr. Palace. Motion by Mr. Palace for a resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Before I turn the floor over to Mr. Keller, I just wanted to state the record that again, this was guided by Illinois and you know, you see past two zero, consideration by council.
Thank you. So Ms. Ryan's, our library director, has advised me that the, she's identified Mango as a preferable provider of a current service that is provided, or was provided, but has since expired from a prior provider. She feels that this service is more user-friendly and it's also a more favorable way than it would be. It has been reviewed by Town Attorney, while I know negotiated this with the provider as well and had some, and I like, through all of this training and stuff.
Mr. Keller, any further discussions, Mr. Mauer?
Just a question about the actual services provided. Are they available only at the library or are they...
No, they're available online, but you have to enter in the library card to get access to it, so there's a credentialing to, like, what you have in the library card from our library. Thank you.
All right, seeing nothing further, I will call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Again, motion carries six to zero. Moving on to item F, is the Resolution Regarding the Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee, Mr. Palace?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution Regarding Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee and Move for Its Adoption. Resolution to reestablish the Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee, whereas on June 28th, 1999, the Town of Monroe established an Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee, which terminated on June 30th, 2003, and whereas pursuant to the Town Code is the policy of the town to maintain open space acquisition and develop a program, and whereas the Conservation and Water Resources Commission has at the direction of the First Selectman developed criteria relative to potential acquisition of open space, and whereas the town may reasonably expect that opportunities for open space acquisition may be presented in the near future, now therefore be resolved that the Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee is hereby established, reestablished to act in advisory capacity to the First Selectman, the Town Council and the other town boards and commissions for the purpose of identifying, prioritizing and making recommendations regarding the acquisition and funding of open space land in the town, and be it further resolved that the committee will consist of eight members appointed by the chairman of the Town Council, with each member representing one of the following: Town Council, Board of Finance, Conservation and Water Resources Commission, Inlands Wettling Commission, Economic Development Commission, Parks and Recreation Committee, Board of Education, Planning and Zoning Commission. The vacancy on the committee shall be filled by the chairman of the Town Council. The First Selectman shall be an executive member and staff from the town departments shall attend and participate in staff liaisons as directed by the First Selectman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Palace, motion by Mr. Palace for a resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formicella. I am happy to turn this one over again to the Selectman for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know from my cover letter, I have just come to my attention that there are parcels of land in town that are certainly potential opportunities for acquisition and preservation. As mentioned in the resolution, I did ask the Conservation and Water Resources Commission to come up with some evaluation criteria in that regard. They have completed that project and provided that to me. And in my further research, I found that this committee was established several years ago, but was allowed to lapse. It certainly, the town looked into some research on this, I'm trying to feel that, I feel strongly that it's a committee that we should reestablish so that there is a multidisciplinary approach and input to what I think ultimately will come into this body for eventual consideration of potential opportunities. Obviously, it's open after a meeting, etc., but we certainly start with this council and I think it would be helpful for this council to have and to help restore every various values as they continue to live.
There's some kind of noise in the speakers, do you think that's on our system or you think it's from that computer? Did you shut that again? I was in Rhode Island last week, but I don't think we have any postal waves going on.
It could be this one.
That's all I have, right?
Yeah.
I'm going to plug it through. Wow. I don't think there's some plug, I've unplugged the...
But if you unplug the hook up to the computer...
Yeah, but just unplug the hook up to the computer.
That, the volume hook up.
Okay, well, we'll get it, it's okay. Thank you, thank you for the effort, I appreciate that. So, anything further?
No.
I just want to thank the First Selectman's office for, you know, since Mr. Keller has been in office, there's been many of these discoveries of various old committees and he's just done an excellent job being a staff, done an excellent job in uncovering a lot of these ancient committees and documents and rules and regulations and things that none of us knew existed over the years. and things that none of us knew existed over the years, and so a lot of them are very helpful, and this happened to be something that is extremely helpful to this, to this council, and I'm even more than it has ever existed before, so that these ideas are not so novel that the town has utilized these committees before. So I think it's a wonderful idea, I think it's something, I know that this election's been pushing this initiative forward for a substantial period of time, and happy to learn that the Conservation Commission has made some recommendations that allows us to really move forward, so I think this is a great idea, I'm excited about this, and I look forward to appointing individuals to it. My suggestions, just so everybody knows, is going to be to reach out to the various chairs of those commissions and ask them for their submissions, so that the selectmen people, they can certainly vet their own boards and missions and determine if it's appropriate, and send one back to us. So I will report that back to the council, hopefully by next town meeting. You can have a full, ready to go, committee ready to go, and you can move forward with this process. Thank you very much, Mr. Pelosi, for that. Any further discussion? I'd see none, others in favor?
Aye.
Again, motion carries six to zero. Item G is the request from the estate of Marie Letterer to the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library, Mr. Pelosi?
I'm making a motion to accept the request of $50,000 from the estate of Marie Letterer to the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library.
Motion by Mr. Pelosi, is there a second? It goes without saying that we place these requests, these large requests, on our agenda to give our very grateful appreciation to the individuals who help our town function and with their generosity, so that's the purpose of this, and on behalf of the council, we very much appreciate the donation, and I want to thank the estate of Marie Letterer, the financiers and fiduciaries who are making that happen. So with that, I will, any further discussion? With that, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And again, motion carries six to zero. We also have an in-time donation from the friends of the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library to the library, Mr. Pelosi?
I'll make a motion to accept the donations to the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library, consisting of $3,800 for carpentry services, 7202, 15 wall panels, $37,500, $27,500 design and general contractor services, $11,935 and 70 cents for furniture. Indeed, this is a generous donation, but in Monroe lines.
Motion by Mr. Pelosi, is there a second? Second by Mr. Formicella. Again, given what I said, without these volunteer efforts and funds, unfortunately, where we live in these days is a very necessary matter of how the community function, outside of the substantial tax case that we have, so we appreciate all the generosity that's given to the town. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Again, motion carries six to zero. The last item is the Resolution authorizing the town attorney to settle a tax appeal regarding 448 Pepper Street, so I'm going to ask for, because it's a matter of attorney litigation, I'm going to ask for a motion to have this council go into executive session to discuss this matter, and invite into that executive session our First Selectman, Mr. Kellert, our town attorney, Mr. Hayden, and our tax assessor, Mr. Feldman, does that cover anybody that?
That's our...
Motion by Mr. Pelosi, is there a second? Second by Mr. Formicella, all those in favor? Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six to zero, so everybody present would please step outside for a moment. We will go back into active session subsequent to the executive session, two votes.
Do you think the resolution could be done?
It's an opportunity to stretch every leg. Oh, it's not, so...
It's still on.
That's your job. I did it one time, I didn't hold you, but you could.
I'll pay attention, since I sit over here, how to do it?
One time, Steve, yeah, Steve Yellen playing me, it would be really important to me.
Can the door open there, Jeremy?
All right, one more time.
I'll, I'll...
And we're back on, on video.
Thank you. I'm here.
Oh, we're right, yes.
Carol, this is what you want, right, that's the big resolution?
Is that what you love?
Red, for five minutes. Oops.
No, we got that one. The other one. No, that, that I've got. No, it's the one that it had to do with the 1920s and the Club of the Lions, well, and all that.
Oh, the donation, sure.
Yep. And John, can I have a picture?
It's on table.
Edith Wheeler one, right? Carol, this one with the don't?
All right, are we back on the record? Can we go back on the record? We lost out on our audience, so we're... All right, so we are out of executive session, and we are now going to take up Item I, a new business, so may I have a motion, it's regarding the Resolution authorizing the town attorney to settle the tax appeal for 448 Pepper Street? May I have a motion to authorize the First Selectman and the Town Attorney to execute the stipulation to judgment as proposed in executive session?
So will...
Motion by Mr. Pelosi, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formicella. Discussion was had in executive session, and is there any further discussion? Obviously, I would caution anybody to have discussion regarding the confidential discussions, that would cost us an executive session, but, there, okay. So seeing no further discussion, I'm going to call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we have a process six to zero, that concludes our new business. Second public participation, so there, would anybody like to participate at this time? Seeing none, I will close second public participation. Motion, is there a motion to adjourn, Mr. Mauer? Motion by Mr. Pelosi, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Formicella, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mr. Reed, is there a nine?
Yep.
Six to zero, thank you very much, everybody.